Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County.
New business?
I have none.
Number one, the bell casting will be held at the fairgrounds, Wellington, Ohio on August 19th and 20th. Two, administration briefing will be held on Tuesday, August 26, 2003, at 9:30 for the discussion on the Oracle system. Three, Board of Commissioners will meet on Thursday, September 25, 2003, at 7:00 PM at Corey McMiddle School, 201 South Main Street, Wellington, Ohio. Therefore, no meeting will be held that day. And four, reports given by Ron Twining, Director of Lorraine County Community Development Department. One, Lorraine County Port Authority. And two, 2002 Annual Report on the Community Development Department.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Ron Twining, T.W.I.N.I.N.G., and I'm here first as the Director of the Port Authority. And for the public's information, it's important that we at least acknowledge that the Port Authority, while created by the Board of Commissioners, it is separate and we're trying to desperately separate our identity through the Port Authority from the county Commissioners. It has a board of five members that directs the operation of the County Port Authority. And out of the courtesy of the Board of County Commissioners, to that Port Authority board, you have authorized two staff members of the Community Development Department to work directly on the efforts while we're establishing the Port Authority. Those two individuals are myself and Karen Johnston. Today, I am pleased to give you a verbal report on the efforts of the Port Authority since it's been started. It was really put together in the year 2001. The Port Authority has a bond reserve fund with National City Bank in Cleveland that has $2.5 million in that bond reserve fund, a million and a half coming from the Port of County Commissioners, and $1 million that was a match from the Department of Development. And that bond reserve fund guarantees payments on any bond projects that the Port Authority puts out. I think at this juncture, it might be interesting, if not important, to note that there were basically three counties that established, or communities that established, Port Authorities about the same time. The first one being Summit County. They really got theirs established in the year 2000 and finalized the necessary setup in 2001. Dayton, Montgomery County, Dayton, Ohio, started theirs in 2001 and finished the establishment in 2002. And frankly, we started ours in 2001 and wrapped things up in 2002. Of those three entities, we were the last to enter the Port Authority arena. And we were the first, and so far, the only Port Authority that has completed any projects. We have completed two to date. The first transaction being $1.245 million, yeah, $1.245 million. And that was the new Visitors Bureau facility that is being built on State Route 58 in Amherst Township. The other one was a Certificate of Participation, or COPS. And that was with the Midview Local School Districts. They are in the process of using the state and local funding to construct three elementary school buildings. And that project, and our participation in that amounted to $20,335,000 that will be invested here in Lorraine County. I might also point out, even though I've talked to her numerous times on the telephone, this is the first that I've had an opportunity to meet Barbara Tigliano. She has been part of the legal council. So Barb, thank you for all of your countless hours putting some of these master indentures together. She has been quite active with the setup of the Port Authority. In total, right now, we are working with 13 other companies that are looking for assistance from the Port Authority. In a nutshell, while we have signed confidentiality agreement and cannot divulge much information, there are two of them that I think will probably be seriously looked at yet before the end of this year. One is currently working with ODOT. It is a large recreational facility, putting together in the private sector, that is looking for access management in one of our townships. And we probably can do a lease option with those folks. And it's looking like that will be another $2 million that we probably will be requested to work with. We have a company, a longstanding Lorraine County company, that is, in this economic time, experiencing some real difficulty. And we feel that we may be able to acquire a portion of their existing facilities, give them 20 years. The facilities are basically paid off. We will give them 20 years to pay back the Port Authority on about a $2 million facility upgrade. They will take that $2 million and buy new equipment and new investment and employ as many as, retain the current workforce and employ as many as 68 additional employees. And so, that's some of the activity that the Port Authority allows us to do. Again, it's important to at least remind the public that, as a county agency, because of the size of the City of Illyria and City of Lorraine, they, on most cases, are permitted and actually do a lot of the economic development by themselves, independent of the county. We offer our services when called upon and have worked quite closely, on some occasions, with some of the Illyria projects. One of these is located in one of those two cities. And I think that if it was not for the County Port Authority, I'm not sure that the city that we are working with would be able to help the expansion efforts of this one longstanding Lorraine County company. Other than that, I think I would be happy to answer any questions. We do have a, with the first project, it went out. We were anticipating, as most Port Authorities, a triple B-plus rating. Frankly, again, because of the Board of Commissioners and its rating, Fitch did give us a double A rating for the first project. And so, that gave the Visitors Bureau a better interest rate on their return. They will make a payment to us in November. And they are on schedule to do just that and will keep us current. After we established the Port Authority, there was a Western, I want to be careful here, a Western Ohio Port Authority that had an industry that did miss a payment. And that has complicated several of the guarantees and letters of credits that Port Authorities are now obligated to give, as established by the rating agencies. So when we established this, we thought we could leverage money a lot easier and better than what we are doing after this mispayment, which used or dipped into the bond reserve fund. It's an effort to make sure that our $2.5 million is secured, that the rating company or agencies are requiring extra due diligence on the part of all Port Authorities, not only in the state of Ohio, but other states as well. With that, I think I've hit the highlights of the progress of the last year and a half, two years. I'd be happy, on behalf of the Port Authority, to answer any questions that you may have.
Is there any questions? No, I think it kind of speaks for itself. I want to thank you and those that have been involved with you in working on this Port Authority, which I think has a lot of opportunities to assist Lorraine County.
Thank you, Ron.
If it's a pleasure of the Board, the next item on there is our annual report. So I'll skip into that. And then, following that, I will briefly touch on the request that Commissioner Vacy had last week with employment numbers. And I can do this rather quickly. The annual report was finished finally. This is for the year 2002. It was completed at the end of June and made available in July. Copies came over to the Commissioners as well as their administrative assistants. We've mailed out copies to all of the libraries throughout Lorraine County and given those as well to other departments that we either work with or hope to work with in the future. It is a breakdown, both by the two divisions in our operation right now. The first one being economic development and the second one, planning and zoning. And it is, even though it appears to be six to eight months after the fact, it is a report identifying the work that was conducted by your department and the community development staff between January of 2002 and December of 2002. And we would encourage anybody to look at that, either through the library or if they would like a copy, we do have those available through our office. You can contact us. The number would be 328-2330 and request a copy. You can get that either way. But it is a report on the efforts of the Board of County Commissioners and their Community Development Department.
Thanks again.
The last item, I have Rebecca Jones here. And I'm going to ask, I'm just giving new charts. I'm going to ask Yvonne to give the numbers to the Board of Commissioners, to Prosecutor Manning, Administrator Cortez, and the Clerk of the Commissioners, Ms. Upton. The Commissioners ask for information regarding to the number of jobs that are created. If you remember, in the year 2000, the Land Use Plan was adopted by the County Commissioners. In that document, it was a goal that we tried to establish in Lorraine County, 30,000 new jobs between the year 2000 and 2020. The question came up, we're about three years into that. The planning document cost about $200,000, just under $200,000, just under $100,000 to produce. And there was an appropriate and very good question, how many jobs have been created? And we have prepared those numbers. That has been prepared by Rebecca Jones, that's sitting here to answer, frankly, the really tough questions. We've given the Commissioners an eight-year history so that you might have a little bit of a sense what is happening on a longer period. The number that we are going to be looking at is the number starting in the year 1999 and will go through the year 2020 ultimately. As you see from the numbers, we had, by the end of 2002, we had produced 1,839 more jobs in Lorraine County. Obviously, there were some layoffs and companies and operations that closed. So the number by the end of 2002 had actually decreased. And this is going to be a moving target. Ultimately, our goal here is not to worry so much about creating 30,000 jobs each and every year on a sequential basis over that 20-year period, but to look at trends. And I think this gives us an excellent opportunity for the Commissioners, upon their request, to see how we're doing. You can see that the year 2000, depending on which of the two reports you're following, the year 2000 and 2001 were important years and those were our peak years. And with the lag in reporting, obviously, the slowdown in the national economy has certainly been reflected in some of the numbers here in Lorraine County. The two charts that the Commissioners have in front of them, all of these are involving anyone 16 years of age and older. The top chart includes those folks. The top chart is the one that includes those that are covered by unemployment compensation should their jobs cease or be put on furlough for a period. The bottom chart is those that are not, or that are and are not covered by unemployment compensation. Another way to state that, from my vantage point, is the lower chart will include sole proprietors and operators like that, that are not necessarily guaranteed unemployment compensation should they be laid off. Again, the numbers on the lower chart, you'll see, if you look at the benchmark of 1999 that we will be using for the next 20 years, 141,200. And the total that we had reached in 2001 had gotten up to 143,000 jobs. It has declined from that 143 to 141,400. If you look at the longer life history, 1995 to 2000, you see that the total net increase under that scenario, with the sole proprietors and ag community that are family farms and things, the net increase was an increase of 2.5%. With those that are not covered, are only covered with the unemployment, the numbers are obviously smaller. But we had, over that eight-year period, a drop of total employees of 240 or a net loss of 240 over that eight-year period. And the percentage change on that. There are a lot of factors that go into these reports. Rebecca has handed me charts and maps that, do we have enough copies for passing out? We'll have Rebecca pass those out to the Commissioners. I am not going to go over the charts at this point because I saw them in rough form, but I have not seen them in final form. Rebecca or I, either one, can answer questions, either today or in the future, that the Commissioners may have. So this is a report on where the employment numbers are. The only thing in summary that I would say is that we have compared our numbers with the state of Ohio and we're holding our own with the state's average. We have also compared our numbers with the Cleveland region. And we're actually doing much better than the Cleveland region. So I think that, again, a lot of credit should be given to the Board of Commissioners for making the level of investment that they have because it certainly has helped. I would hate to think what the numbers might be like in Lorraine County had we not made, or you had not made, this investment to help create and expand businesses here in Lorraine County. Are there questions at this point? Thank you very much.
We have five minutes. And earlier today, Richard Corbin, Vice President of the Rolling Thunder in Ohio Chapter 6, came in and spoke with me. And I'd like to give him at least three, four minutes, whatever we have here, until our next scheduled appointment here, a few minutes to speak with us.
Yes, good morning. My name is Richard Corbin. I'm Vice President of Rolling Thunder Ohio Chapter 6. I'd like to make a statement that we're not a rogue motorcycle club or anything like that. We're a POW and MIA awareness organization. We're the ones that lobby the federal government all year long for a full accounting of all our POW and MIAs. We're also involved with helping homeless veterans and disabled veterans from all wars. Right now, we're currently working with about 80 that live in the woods. And we see a great need for a, I'd say, a shelter, like the Green Acres in Oberlin, to house these people. And the need is getting greater and greater all the time. I've been out doing volunteer work now for over 30 years. I've been working the streets for 10 years. And I've been working in the woods for two years. And we helped feed over 2,000 last year and just our organization itself.
Are you talking about just Lorraine County people?
Yes, Lorraine County, ma'am. The homeless, they travel from Florida all the way up through Lorraine, all the way to Wisconsin. They travel from the East Coast, the Carolinas and Georgia. Some states like Georgia and Idaho run the homeless completely out of the state. You know, and most people right now are just a paycheck or two away from being there themselves. I found myself that way. I'm suffering from aging orange. And I was housebound and bedridden for over three years. And I've suffered four strokes. And I've been helping more disabled people that really need the assistance out there. Most of the people don't know where to get assistance, whether they're veterans or non-veterans. And the homeless shelter we have in Lorraine will only house 68. So if you have a family that comes in there, the mother and the children usually can stay, but the father has to go out on the street because there's no room for them in there. And we're also working with the Lorraine County Task Force for the Homeless, work with the Ohio Veterans Services, and Ohio Job Family Services as volunteers. Thank you.
My name is Gary Wilder, I'm President of the Rolling Thunder Ohio Chapter 6. What Rich said is true. We put in anywhere from 50 to 70 hours a week of our own volunteer time on the street to help the homeless, a lot of them vets, some of them non-vets. If you see, when you get out there to help these people, the smile and the tears in their eyes, they can put the tears in our eyes. It's a great need in Lorraine County for transitional centers in Lorraine for the homeless. You get them back to where they can walk down the street, their heads up high and proud again. A lot of these people lost their jobs due to companies shutting down, due to illness. If they're on a transitional center, what we like to see done is a two-year program. They will go through training for one year, get back into the job market. And the second year, they will go to work. A percentage of their paycheck will be drawn, turned over to the transitional center to be put into account for them. At the end of the second year, they'll be able to go out, get an apartment, be able to walk down the street and be proud and pay taxes like everybody else, which Trump pays all county, city, federal, and state salaries, is all from taxpayers. Thank you.
Wait, just a minute. Can you please give your name again and spell it? Because this is being televised and they would like to have you give your name and then spell it.
Gary Wilder, W-I-L-D-E-R.
Okay, I was going to tell you, you mentioned Green Acres, but you realize Green Acres has, 75% of that has to be used for children.
Yes, we do. There's a lot of homeless, complete homeless families out there. But also, at the homeless shelter, the homeless is only going to stay there for 30 days and they're back out on the street. They have nowhere to go. There's a lot of vacant buildings also in Lorraine and throughout Lorraine County. Some are schools, which has got kitchens, has got shower facilities. You know, a lot of these buildings could be turned into transitional homes for the homeless and get them back into the working market. Instead of them sitting out on the street and, you know, in the winter, they try and, some of them are lucky, they get into overnight shelter. They're back out on the street at 6 o'clock in the morning. Can't go back at 7 o'clock in the evening. Pretty cold out there the last couple winters. Does anybody in this room, even the Commissioners, that I've talked to people, that tries to say, "Oh, no, I got $80,000 in the bank. I'll never be homeless." If you've got a mortgage, you've got a car payment, you're homeless. If you lose your job, you're one paycheck away.
Okay, I agree. I'd like to talk with both of you further and get with, I don't know, someone from the homeless centers, maybe Paul Pacino, and see what we can do.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you and thanks for coming here. Hey, Madam Clerk, next thing on the agenda?
Mr. Manning, the Lorraine County Screening and Diversion Program. Pardon me? Can we take a five-minute break and check our calendars for availability? Do you mind? No, what, please? Okay, if you don't mind.
We have a five-minute break?
I'd like to call the meeting back to order. I guess we're going to go out of order for a minute because the judge is going to speak before the prosecutor. She has a case going and needs to get out of here as soon as possible.
Are we going to resolve these sewer issues before we do that or not?
Well, let's get this out of the way and then we'll go back to that.
The first thing that I want to bring to the Commissioners' attention is that when I first took the bench in 1989, we had a diversion program. Then, we stopped the diversion program. And we currently have one that was put into effect on, I think, about April 4 of the year 2000. It has been put in effect for one time. I have reviewed the proposal that Mr. Manning sent over, as have the judges. And in fact, I speak to you in my capacity as a presiding judge. And I will tell you that the judges have met, we have reviewed Mr. Manning's proposal. There is no one on the bench who is opposed to diversion in principle. But it does seem, from comments that I have heard, frankly, from people outside the justice system, from maybe some of the questions that the Commissioners might have, and particularly from the media, that most people do not understand what a diversion program does and what the impact on the criminal justice system is. So I've prepared a handout for you today. And I just want to kind of run through it with you very, very quickly. The way that diversion works is it is a post-indictment program. In Lorraine County, the County Prosecutor's Office specifically provides services to the Lorraine County Court of Common Pleas. Mr. Manning, I think, will agree with me that his office does not provide services to the municipal courts in the Lorraine County jurisdiction. They have their own municipal prosecutors. So a diversion program would be post-indictment. And again, as I've indicated to you, and as I tell every jury panel, every criminal case begins with the filing of an indictment for felony purposes. And so indictments would be filed both if a case is going to diversion or if it is going through the normal process. They would both come to arraignment. Pre-trial conferences between prosecutor and defense would look at discovery issues. And the discovery issues are the place where a determination would be made of those offenders who would be considered for diversion. Remember that the first recommendation for diversion would come from the prosecutor's office. The prosecutor, in a felony case, and we have excellent felony prosecutors in all of our courtrooms who know their cases very well, the prosecutor would know, one, that the offense is an eligible offense. And I've kind of generally ballparked, and I think Mr. Manning has done a very detailed preparation for you of offenses that would be eligible for diversion. But they are essentially low-level felony fours and fives, non-violent offenses, not drug crimes. All of our drug crimes have a program that's specifically designed for drug crimes called Intervention in Lieu of Conviction, which frankly parallels diversion. But we would be looking at non-violent four and five eligible offenders. Once the prosecutor determines that the offense is eligible, the prosecutor then looks to see if the offender is eligible. The offender must have no prior record. They must have previously, I think the statute refers to some kind of generic language about having lived a law-abiding life, and that this case arises out of circumstances that are not likely to recur. At that time, we would ask for a diversion report. Diversion reports, and I have done some checking before I came over here to discuss this with you, Unit 2 of the State Probation Department. That's the same unit that currently does the pre-sentence investigations under the normal process. They have agreed to do diversion reports for at least a period of six months. And I'm going to come back to why that six months number is important. Now, again, if you Now, again, if you look at, at the graphic that I've done, there's no impact on the system. We're not seeing more cases, we're not seeing fewer cases. Both cases, because under the normal process, anyone who's eligible for screening and diversion is going to, as a practical matter, receive probation at the time of sentencing. Remember, these are low-level, non-violent offenses where the offender has no prior record. Nobody's gonna be sending this person to prison. They're gonna be placed on community control sanctions. So we're still gonna be doing the reports. The impact on the probation department would be the same. Now, the way that the diversion program should work is that when the report comes back, a plea should be entered. The defendant pleads guilty and is referred to the diversion programming. And right now, diversion supervision can be done by any appropriate agency and the appropriate agency that the judges, uh, have determined is the Lorraine County Adult Probation Department. That's Mike Willetts's unit. Why are we taking a plea? We're taking a plea, quite frankly, as a practical matter. I don't think it's a requirement of the statute, neither does the statute preclude it. But we're talking about felony fours and fives. We're talking about fairly low-level offenses. If the offender does not successfully complete, if a plea is taken and the case comes back to court, it goes directly to sentencing. That's the process we use in our screening and diversion programs. If we don't take the plea, then it comes back to the place where it was on the docket, which is in the pre-trial stage, which forces Mr. Manning's prosecutors to go back and try to construct a felony case where they have the burden of proof with maybe two-year-old evidence, maybe witnesses who have moved, maybe things that, that haven't been saved or kept just because of time and space and that sort of thing. So we believe that there would be a tremendous difficulty in placing people on probation in an open case without a plea. And frankly, the entry that we currently have would need to be amended in that regard and we are more than prepared to do that. However, for your purposes, there's still no impact on the system. Um, again, the advantage of a diversion program to the offender is that if they successfully complete the program, the case is dismissed. Now, as I told you a few minutes ago, every criminal case begins with a filing of an indictment. Every criminal case ends with the sentencing of the offender. If we do not go to sentencing and the case is dismissed prior to sentencing, then this offender has no felony record. And that's the advantage of diversion. The advantage is procedural, it's not substantive. And the advantage to the offender is this person can serve a term of probation, not go to sentencing and have their case dismissed. And as, as many of you are aware, and, and as just makes plain old-fashioned common sense, there are lots of things where having a felony record or not having a felony, felony record impacts one's lifestyle. So the advantage to the offender is they can complete the process and have no felony record. The benefit to the community is this is a person who has demonstrated, both by their prior lifestyle and their successful completion of a diversion program, that they are unlikely to be re-involved in the criminal justice system. So I think it's a win-win situation for, for everyone. Now, I think that in Mr. Manning's original request for diversion, he talked about something like 1,230 eligible offenses last year. And is that about right, Jeff? Those are, that's...
About 1,200.
Yeah. And I think that that's true. I think we probably had about 1,200 and something eligible offenses. But I can tell you, and as I believe Mr. Manning will tell you, that there, it's not just the offense, but the offender that must be eligible and that there is no way we had anywhere close to that number of eligible offenders. For example, a theft coming through the normal process at the felony level means in many instances that there's been a prior conviction at the municipal level. That's how it got to be a felony theft is because this offender has a prior record. So although the offense may qualify, the offender does not. So in, in looking at this, I would make a couple of suggestions to the commissioners. We can't give you any accurate numbers. And you know, I've been coming over here now for 15 or so years and as I talk with my colleagues around the state, I think that in Lorraine County, we've been very, very, um, blessed to have had a good working relationship between the commissioners and the courts. Uh, as the commissioners know, because they go to the same conferences I do, that's not the case around the state of Ohio. And I like to believe that one of the reasons that we have the relationship that we have with the county commissioners is because we try to come over here and we try to give you the very best information that we have and we try not to ask for things prematurely. And I think our position is that what we need to do is we need to, one, tweak the existing entry a bit to make clear that we need to take a plea of guilty. Um, that there needs to be a request for diversion by the prosecutor and frankly, by the defense. And we need to get a diversion report and if diversion is going to be offered, then we need to take a plea of guilty. And I, I don't think that's philosophically something you're opposed to, is it, Jeff?
It's part of the proposal, Judge.
It's part of your proposal. And I think we need to take that and we need to add it to the existing proposal. And then we need to run a pilot program for six months. We would use State Unit Two to do the diversion reports. State Unit Two of the Adult Probation Department is of course, state-funded. So there is frankly, no increase in their workload, which is why they're willing to do it, and there is no budget impact. We will use Mike Willetts's Adult Probation Department for the six-month trial run. And then we can sit down with Mr. Manning, Mr. Willetts and the State Probation people, take a look at what we've got, and come back to you in six months with hard numbers. And then of course, perhaps Mr. Manning can also come back to you with what the impact on his staff has been. Mr. Willetts can tell you what the impact on his probation officers has been. And I'll tell you now that my expectation is it will not make any difference in the docket, docket numbers pro or con. Again, these are not cases that get strung out. These are cases where it's gonna be, as a practical matter, probation anyway. And so what I would suggest to the commissioners at this time, uh, with Mr. Manning's, uh, consent, is that we tweak the existing entry a bit. And I think that, um, we have a pretty good working relationship with the prosecutor's office. I don't think there'd be a problem in doing that. And that we actually run the program for six months and then we come back to you in the event that additional resources are needed. I don't believe there are any additional resources needed at this time until we can come back with some, with some legitimate numbers. And now I'm prepared to take any questions that the commissioners may have.
Any questions? Are you responding? I, I think I would like to hear the prosecutor's response to your suggestions, Judge.
Okay. I've got some extra copies if press want them and I'll leave them.
All right, commissioners, uh, thank you for having me here this morning and your patience in listening to this, uh, proposal once again. The last time I sat in for Jerry, we had a, a brief unexpected discussion of this program. So I think I've said, uh, I, I covered sort of the, the outside borders of the box at that time. But I, I submitted to you for your review, a, a draft of a more detailed proposal. And I'm here this morning to try to discuss that with you, uh, and answer your questions. Um, I'd like, first of all, I'd like to thank Judge McGuff and the other members of the General Division of the Court for, uh, taking the time to, to look at this and, and for their support of the, of the diversion idea. I think, um, it's important that we be creative in what we do here in Lorraine County uh, because of the, uh, what we're facing in terms of our, our docket numbers. And I think diversion is one of those types of programs we can, we can take a look at and, uh, with our goal in sight that, uh, public safety of, uh, the community of Lorraine County is our first and foremost concern. The judge, um, I think gave you a pretty good overview, uh, overview of what diversion is. Let me, uh, I'm, I'm gonna go through a little bit of a discussion again. And if, um, if I retread, uh, retrace some ground, I apologize. There is an existing diversion program in Lorraine County. It's been in existence for quite some time and it was used in one case. And it was, it was specifically designed for one case and it hasn't been used since then. Our, our proposal takes, takes that concept and expands it. What we're doing with, what our proposal does with the diversion program is, is to make it, uh, change the scope of the program from one case, one eligible case, to a pool of cases that could be, uh, a substantial number. The judge referred to, uh, an attachment to my proposal, uh, that, that was, uh, distributed that indicated that there could be, uh, as high as 1,200 eligible cases.
Eligible offenses.
Eligible offenses. Thank you, Judge. Now, we all know that's not realistic. That, that figure is gonna be substantially reduced by, uh, taking a look at who is actually eligible for the program for different reasons. A lot of these, um, eligible offenses are, uh, contained in multiple count indictments that would disqualify the, the individual. A lot of these are, are second offense, uh, type cases, uh, second offense theft offenses and, and other types of cases that would substantially pare those numbers down. Uh, what that final number is, uh, our statistical information isn't, uh, isn't equipped to tell us. So, uh, we don't know. But let's assume for the sake of argument that there's gonna be, uh, between 100 and 200 cases eligible for the diversion program. I think that's probably, um, a fair, reasonable figure and it's a, it's probably a conservative figure. Uh, if, if we analyze those types of cases and their eligibility and the impact on our offices, you can see that, that, um, it could have a substantial impact. 200 cases is a, is a pretty heavy caseload for, for, uh, any probation office to be expected to, uh, integrate into their current system without some sort of a, a financial support. 200 cases off of a common pleas court docket could be helpful in a number of ways. The judge described her vision of how the, how, uh, the cases will work through the system. And I, I don't think, uh, in the final, uh, the final document that we all agree to, it's gonna be much different. One of the things that we insist on in our office and it, and it, which is a diversion from the current program that's in place, is that we insist that the, the individual enter a plea of guilty at the beginning of the case. And that accomplishes a couple of things. Uh, one of the things it accomplishes is it, it, it encourages the person to take some responsibility for their actions. So they're entering a plea of guilty. Now, um, that, that plea of guilty has a, a couple of other effects. Uh, it, it, it makes them, uh, conditionally eligible for the program if they meet some of our other requirements. I envision the program is that they apply for, for admission in the program. We review the application, we pre-screen it in our office with, uh, our, our administrator of the program and we determine their initial eligibility. That, that in my mind would take the, the, the case, uh, out of, off the active dock of the court, send it over for review by probation to determine their final eligibility for the program. Uh, if they meet the conditions of the program that they're gonna be required to agree to. So they enter a plea of guilty and then they agree to the conditions of the program. And what, what that essentially does is move a probational offense from the end of the docket to the beginning of the docket. Uh, if you're gonna wind up in, uh, community control sanctions at the end, why not move that to the beginning? Take it off the court's active docket, uh, let it be screened, let these people meet the conditions and agree to meet the conditions. And if they fail in meeting the conditions, then they go back into court for sentencing. Because they've, remember, they've already pled guilty to the offense. So we're eliminating, uh, a number of intermediary steps in, uh, in a, in the current, currently existing process. And we went and looked at, at, uh, at our statistics. But again, we're not set up to, to try to pull all these statistics off. So we had, it took quite a bit of work for us to determine what the average, uh, number of, uh, court hearings there are in, in a, in a typical criminal case that our office processes. And we've come to the conclusion that there's about 10 to 12 hearings in the average case. Now, that surprised me. I thought there was probably five or six, but there's actually 10 to 12. If you move someone into a diversion program, you can probably pare that down to three court appearances. Because if they are successful in the, in the program, there's a journal entity that's gonna be, uh, signed with, without the necessity of a hearing that, that dismisses the case. If they fail in the program, they're gonna come in at the end of the process and immediately move to sentencing. So you're eliminating a lot of these intermediary pre-trials that, that currently happen in a typical case. Now, analyze the effect of that. If you eliminate, if you have 200 cases, 200, a pool of 200 potential cases and you eliminate nine to 10 hearings in a case, what's, what's the impact of that? Well, the impact is substantial in a lot of different areas. Uh, the impact on the commissioner's obligation, uh, for court-appointed attorney fees changes. The, um, the, the, the number of, uh, hours of, of people sitting around in the hallway at the courthouse changes. So your cost to subpoena witnesses, your cost for overtime for officers to sit at these hearings. Uh, there's a lot of, 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 um, what you might consider unanticipated benefits of this type of a program that translate into financial savings for, for the county. Now, these financial savings are quick, quickly eaten up by what I see are the, are the costs to implement a program like this. And I gave you a, a, what I considered to be a, a, a shot at an initial budget the first time I was here. And you saw that that was, uh, over $200,000. We've, uh, taken another look at it and, and, uh, tried to hit some of the targets that we missed initially. And that, 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 probably that original projection should have been more in the area of $236,000 because we left off, uh, some, some personnel costs that should have been brought into that formula. But by re-analyzing what we could do internally at our office, we've eliminated some of the positions that we thought would initially be created. The physicians are still there, but we're absorbing them internally. What we've done is we've realigned our administrative staff and we've, uh, reassigned duties within the office. So people are picking up additional duties within our office to free up Marty Ebbel, who's our, our most experienced administrator, to take over this program. So Marty now has, uh, has, some of his duties have been reassigned within the office. People are working a little harder and, uh, we're able to take that, that, uh, portion of the budget for our project administrator out of the budget. Uh, and with that, we're able to reduce, that and some of the other costs we've, we've eliminated, we've been able to reduce this projection down to probably $123,000. And what, uh, composes that figure is, uh, a figure given to me by Mr. Willetts of, of the, of the costs necessary for him, uh, what he felt the projected costs of an entry-level probation officer would be. Uh, we added to that the, uh, the general fund, uh, expenses of, uh, the hospitalization. We've added a secretary and then we've added the startup costs. And that budget's set out for you pretty clearly in the, uh, in the exhibits that we attached to our proposal. Mr. Willetts suggested, uh, as late as yesterday, that we might want to add a, a couple thousand dollars for mileage, which we didn't have into the original proposal. So that, that brings, uh, what we think a realistic budget for this program would be about $123,000. That savings, or that cost can quickly be addressed by some of these soft savings that we addressed earlier. If you take, uh, just as an example, if you take 200 cases and you multiply that by 10 hearings, you've got 2,000 hearings a year. If you multiply that by $50 a hearing for a court-appointed attorney, that's a, that's a savings of $100,000 just on those costs. Now, that's not an accurate figure. It's just a, it's just a figure that, uh, we're doing by just extrapolating some of the figures. It's probably less than that, but it gives you an idea of how the costs can, can add up. Then you add to that your subpoena costs, your service costs, uh, uncollected costs and fines that, that, uh, we would insist be, be paid as, as one of the conditions of the diversion program. And some of the, um, some of the costs that the commissioners wouldn't save, but would be saved by the other governmental agencies in the county, which could be the overtime costs for having people sit in the hallway. The, the, the program more, more, would more than justify itself in terms of the expenditures required. Uh, the judge, uh, made some, some good suggestions and, and, uh, I've had some discussion with the other, other judges in the General Division. And if you notice, the proposal that you had in front of you, every page was designated as a draft. And the reason that... And the reason that we did that was because we wanted dialogue to begin on this issue. We wanted suggestions, and we wanted to be able to integrate everybody's suggestions into this program. And here's what we've done. First and foremost is, we require the plea of guilty, which is a substantial change from the program that exists today. Second of all, if you read our proposal, it requires the consent of the court. The statutory formula for this type of a program doesn't include that, those parameters. It's a prosecutor's program under the statutory scheme. We've broadened it to bring in the other constituencies that we feel are important to this program, one of which is our fine bench that we have in this county. We have some terrific common police court judges, and their input is gonna be essential into who gets into this program and what happens when they -- if they happen to fail. The other two constituencies we've brought into this program are the police agencies who will be investing a substantial amount of time into investigating these crimes, and they have an investment in what happens in the case. Their input is required under the program we've submitted, as is the victim's input. So the three constituencies, other than the prosecutor's office, we've brought into this, and I think that's a very important tweaking of the statutory plan that exists So will everybody have input? Yes, they will. This isn't a program that the prosecutor's office intends to implement and run rough shot over all the other constituencies and implement. We just don't have that as a concept, nor do we ever have that. Would an interim program work? Well, I think there are some difficulties with that sort of approach, and let me tell you what I believe that they are. In order to implement a program like this, it takes a substantial amount of realignment within our office in order to accomplish this. We've already begun that with reassigning of administrative duties. We've also tried to accomplish some savings to the county by requesting a part-time attorney rather than a full-time attorney, and we're able to do that by reassigning some duties also within our office. We're gonna have to have facilities. We're gonna have to have secretaries. There's gonna -- there could be, depending on how successful this is, there could be an administrative burden that would be unfair to place upon either the probation department or our office without some funding to help us accommodate those changes. I didn't dream -- a lot of these figures are speculative in nature, but the one that isn't is the probation figure. That came directly from Mr. Willetts, and it's a direct response to our discussions with him about the financial impact on providing a probation officer even at an entry level. The goals of this program aren't simply just to have a diversion program. The goals of this program are to help, and this help runs across a couple of lines. It's not only a help to the county in terms of what we feel it may help do in terms of stemming the tide on the growth of our figures. As I said earlier, this isn't a solution to anything. It's just an idea that may help. The other thing it does is it gets low-level defendants out of the system, gets them out early, gives them an opportunity to rectify their prior behavior and to go on with their lives without a felony conviction that could affect their civil rights in a number of ways. We wanna help people who've made a one-time mistake recover from that, and this helps do that. So I think the program's a good program. The way it exists today, it's inadequate to fulfill the goals that I think we're all trying to accomplish. The budget, I think, is a necessity. We're doing it. Trying to implement this program on an interim basis doesn't make as much sense to me as to getting the ball rolling on the program and getting it in place. I know the commissioners are concerned with today's budgetary issues and the climate of the economy in the county with costs, and I think I've tried to address how this may self-fund itself in a number of ways. Be happy to answer your questions, whatever the commissioners might have. I'm open to discussion with anybody who'd like to question, have any questions about the program.
I'm gonna wanna respond.
Yes.
I'm gonna wanna respond to Mr. Manning's comments.
Go ahead.
Okay. First, when the diversion program -- and I don't wanna make any comments, whatever, about what Mr. Manning needs to operate his office. He may very well need an additional budget, and that's up to you to determine. What I do wanna talk about is screening and diversion. When last we had a screening and diversion program, it was run by Richard Bowdler, who is the bailiff to Judge Janus, who is not an attorney. The attorney input on diversion cases should come from the felony prosecutor handling the case. The second thing I wanna point out is that there is no impact on the adult probation services because the number of cases is identical, whether they are diversion or whether they are community-controlled. The same person is gonna have one or the other, so there is no impact on the adult probation services. Secondly, diversion reports can and should be done by the adult state probation department. These are the people who specialize. As a part of the format they use, they get input from the victim, they get input from law enforcement, they get input from all of the stakeholders. That's all completed in the program, in the report that is provided. And if the commissioners would like, I could show you such a pre-sentence investigation and report. I also wanna tell you that the diversion program, which was put in place by Greg Swice's office, has been used one time. It has been used one time because that's the prosecutor's choice. The prosecutor has not sought to implement it. It was not designed for one case. It is a recitation of the statute. It is a recitation of the Ohio Revised Code. Now, it could be used. It hasn't been used. And I guess the thing that bothers me most, because, again, I feel like when we come to you and we ask for things, we should be able to give you information you need to make this decision. As commissioners, you certainly have the ability to increase Mr. Manning's budget in any way that you think appropriate and in any way that he needs. However, you can't implement a screening and diversion program. The statute requires that it be done by journal entry, signed by the presiding judge of the common police court. So that would be me. And our rule throughout the common police bench is a three-pre-trial rule. I have not had a hearing that required a subpoena in a case that would qualify for And I don't -- I can't remember one. We sometimes have suppression hearings in drug cases where we subpoena police officers to come in. But drug cases don't qualify for diversion. They qualify for intervention in lieu. We don't -- I have not had 10 pre-trials in a felony four or five case, and let's say there's an arraignment, let's say there's a first pre-trial, there's a second pre-trial, there's gonna be a decision. And I don't know, Judge Zaleski, on four or five felony fours and fives, do you have 10 or 12 hearings where you would have people coming in pursuant to subpoena?
Pre-trials. Mr. Pramor knows all about those pre-trials.
You have pre-trials.
On City Monday.
But you're not subpoenaing anyone in?
No.
So we're not serving subpoenas, we're not having hearings, we're not calling folks in. So I think that before -- I wanna come to you and talk about how many and what kind. I wanna have some numbers. I wanna know how many cases, and I certainly don't have any problem keeping statistics about how much time, how many cases in court, what kinds of hearings, if any, are involved in presenting you with those kinds of numbers. And I really would say to all of you that I think we all benefit if we're looking at a diversion program. And again, I wanna separate entirely Mr. Manning's budget, which is your role and your responsibility, and I have no opinion, nor do the judges offer any suggestions. That's between you and Mr. Manning. But what I do wanna talk about is a diversion program. And so with that, my remarks are concluded, and if there's anything else that anyone needs from me, I'll be happy to do that. Be happy to provide whatever you need.
Thank you, Judge. I guess I'll respond to the judge.
Well, you can have last words, Jeff. I'm sorry, you're out.
This, of course, isn't intended to be any sort of an adversarial climate with the judges at all, as I understand it, the judges support the program pretty much universally. Some of the details of the program naturally have to be worked out, and that's why our proposal to you is designated as a draft. There's a number of things that are gonna be changed in that before it reaches its final form. But one of the things that won't change is, you know, I don't know what the subpoena costs are, and I didn't quote any subpoena costs to you. The figure I quoted to you were court-appointed attorney's fees, which some of that responsibility, I would guess, falls on the commissioner's shoulders, and there may be a resulted savings in those areas. And I don't know. I don't know. But there may be, and if there is, it reduces the cost of what we think is a good program. I didn't dream up these budget figures. This came from Mr. Willetts, who is going to have the responsibility of monitoring these cases. I do know that if you reduce the number of court hearings, it results in a lot of intangible savings. And there's a lot of savings that we can't quantify at this time, but let's apply a common sense approach to this. And if you wind up with 200 cases and you save even -- let's assume, for the sake of argument, that the judge is correct, that maybe our average figure is incorrect, let's reduce that by half. Let's save five hearings per case. Say I'm half-wrong on what our office statistics show. What's the savings there? What's the savings in terms of resources we can direct in a different direction? And that direction could be to the more serious felonies that are on the court's docket and are on our trial docket with our prosecutors. So there's some intangibles that none of us will ever be able to quantify. I think everybody recognizes that for a prosecutor, there's a somewhat of a risk even proposing a program like this. So, you know, to get into a debate over the effectiveness of it, you know, it doesn't help me a bit. I think the program has some positive ramifications. They're positive for the county, they're positive for the courts, they're positive for the prosecutor's office, and they're positive for the citizens of the county, and that's who we serve. We serve the residents of the county. And if we keep in mind that public safety's the most important issue, I think we could all live with a diversion program structured around the broad parameters I've given you. In order to implement that, we feel we need some dollars to do it, and that's why I'm here, not to debate the program at all, because the judges and I can put that together without the intervention of the commissioners at all. We're here talking about money. And I support Judge McGuff, and I support the common police judges and their need for dollars to run their programs. In fact, out of our forfeiture dollars, we've contributed to the treatment in lieu program by trying to keep in place the screening that occurs there. So we're on board with these efforts, and we're on board not only spiritually, philosophically, but we're on board financially. And what we're asking for from the commissioners is the financial part of that equation so that we can get this program up and running in a fashion that benefits the county. And I haven't answered any questions from anybody yet. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Sure. How come she seemed upset about the whole thing? It sounds like she's the only one that makes the decisions. Now, of all the common police judges, I guess she's the presiding judge? So she's the one that has to make that decision?
Not so be.
Okay, I didn't understand her statement, that's why. Sorry, Judge. No, I just misunderstood, 'cause the way it was --
You want me to sign it?
No, no, no.
Huh?
Oh, hell yeah?
Yeah.
No, she does assign it.
Oh, whoa.
If Mr. Manning says, "I wanna program, we don't have to program," no matter what the judge says. And if you really want to get less cases, we need a sixth judge. And that's what here, Tom, I'm here to address.
That's gonna hell out of Sarah.
If you're done with Mr. Manning.
Listen, let me address that real quickly. I agree with Judge Zaleski. We -- our docket numbers are growing, and they're gonna continue to grow. We're very fortunate that we live in a county that has growth on the horizon for us. So we're gonna be in trouble here in the coming years. And I think we all agree that another judge is going to be necessary. The finances are challenging, we know that. Getting it on the ballot is gonna be challenging, we know that. I'm working with the judge and the other judges in the court to try to make that happen. Timing is the issue there. One of the reasons that I've come forward with a diversion program is to try to help us bridge that gap between now and when we get that new judge.
So what I'm hearing here, excuse me.
Well, she didn't answer my question, though. Did you -- she made it sound like she is the only one that can sign it up.
She does sign it, that's what --
But he said he made -- but, you know, I wouldn't.
Well, I think if we put a little pressure on her from the four other judges, she'll sign anything.
Okay, it's on my hearing.
Or we could have another vote. We elect a new presiding judge.
Excuse me, Judge Zaleski, are you negotiating here?
No, not at all.
Ah.
No, 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 that's all, okay. I don't wanna get involved in what's going on across the street, that we're gonna step back.
Okay.
That's all we're doing. I don't wanna get involved.
It's gonna work. It'll work.
All right, so what I'm hearing --
The diversion program will work.
All right, but what I'm hearing, Judge, is that we're gonna put -- they're requesting the funding, 200-some thousand dollars for this program, right?
I don't think it's that high. I think 120-some thousand dollars.
Well, 120-some thousand, whatever it is.
What we really need, though, is somebody to help Mike Willetts out. We have a diversion program now called the Intervention in Lieu of Treatment of Conviction, and it's where a low-level drug person with charge with a felony four or five comes forward, pleads guilty. We send them, if they qualify, they have to be not convicted of any felonies in the past. They plead guilty, they're sent over to Mike Willetts's unit, and we have somewhere around 90 of those cases pending now, and we've not asked for any additional help there. But if we're gonna get the diversion, people coming in, and whether it's 100 cases, 50 cases, or 75, that escalates to close to 200 people that they're gonna be taken and monitoring for a period of one year. And we need some help there, so. And this is what I believe Jeff wants, another probation officer to help Mr. Willetts's unit pursuant to the statute, that's where it belongs.
Okay, but what I'm hearing is, we're talking about another judge anyway, and a 100-some thousand dollar program here, plus the expense of an additional judge, which I think you mentioned in two years, you'll be back for the --
I believe Judge McGuff addressed that issue. Really, you know, we still see these people, you know? They still have pre-trials, they still have to plead guilty, we have to refer them, we have to bring them back for another sentencing, for a hearing to see if they qualify. If they qualify, then we send them on our way, just like granting them probation. And they're there for a year. If they don't behave themselves, they're back into the system, and we, you know, we're still sentencing them. So the number is not on the docket sheet, but the caseload is there. So I just want you to be aware of that.
Okay.
Any other questions concerning the diversion program?
No.
And if you'd like to hear about my sixth judge?
Maybe two years.
It'll be five minutes, trust me. It's not long. Anyhow, we submitted the proposal to you in March of 2003 for a sixth judge. The numbers at the end of 2002, we had an average of about 716 cases pending. Since that time, we've probably had about 740, so it just keeps going up. And I'm not gonna bore you with the numbers, they're there. I just wanna tell you that the editors of both local newspapers have supported the proposal for a sixth judge. The Bar Association has supported the proposal for a new judge. Our new county prosecutor and the old county prosecutor supported the sixth judge. The only thing we're lacking is the support from the county commissioners. The Supreme Court has suggested, we've met with them on numerous occasions, they suggested we needed a sixth judge. Now, I understand one of the problems is the budget. I understand that the county may be strapped, the state of Ohio is certainly strapped. So we wanted this to be passed this year for a judge to be elected in 2004 to take the bench in 2005. Being realistic, the judges are gonna suck it up for another two years, hopefully, and if we can -- And if we can get some support for the commissioners to have a judge, ask for a judge at the state level, in the, to be elected in the year 2006, to take the seat in 2007, that's our, sort of, our olive branch, or our good faith showing to the commissioners that we're willing to play along with it. In addition, Mr. Manning, being the legislature that he was, has been talking to Columbus. They appreciate it. The Supreme Court says that they will offer us a visiting judge if we need it on a continuing basis. And the good thing about that is, is that it costs the county nothing for that judge to visit. It's all paid for by the Supreme Court. They do want us to have a secretary or a bailiff for the judge if one is, if one is going to be seated. And I see no problem with that. The bailiff, we could always accommodate from one of our own staff. So with that, I urge you to at least pass a resolution for a judge to be elected in the year 2006. And I'm not going to bore you with the statistics, you already have those. The numbers, we've read about those in the newspapers, I got my version, and you have your version, and it's probably somewhere in the middle of that. I just don't know. In addition to that, what we really like is, in most counties, they have an administrator. As the commissioner's well-known, if you look to your right, you see Mr. Cortez. And without Mr. Cortez, I'm sure the commissioner's work would be extremely difficult. He's the coordinator. We have some 53 employees in our system, and the brunt of that is thrust upon the administrative judge. So I have to take my time to tend to all the problems. My secretary, and I don't have an extra secretary, she does all the payroll, keeps all track of that, and she does all of the problems that has to arise. And with that, we truly need an administrator to coordinate and to at least have somebody sit here on behalf of the judges for each of your meetings, rather than seeing the judge, and when a judge walks in, he says, "Oh, what the heck does he want now?" So with that, I, the, I'm going to let Tim Looby address the issue concerning an administrator. I just want to tell you that we do have the room for him in the new courthouse. There's a visiting judge's chambers there that could be occupied by an administrator and a secretary. So with that, Mr. Looby?
Good morning, commissioners. I would like to do the same thing, don't want to bore you with the statistics. We've sent over in the past a description of the duties and responsibilities that we would expect of our court administrator, and you should have that in front of you. I'm really here to answer any questions you may have, as far as the expectations you would have of this individual. I mean, I think we can easily justify this individual as a economic savings to the court, and in turn to the county. As the judge indicated, we have 53 employees that are under the control of the General Division Court. So everything from payroll to human resource issues would fall within this individual's gamut, as well as things like purchasing and grants. We were hoping that this individual can give us assistance in that respect. And again, when you're making purchasing issues for five separate courts, and hopefully down the road, six courts, we're hoping to get a little bit more cohesion in that process, and in turn, keep costs down and make the courts a little bit more efficient. So I would be prepared to respond to any questions that you may have.
I would like to, Judge, through you, to suggest when he would like this position, most expeditiously to be filled?
Unfortunately, yes. Our issue right now is space. Physically, we don't have a location for this individual. As we are making the transition over, and we need this individual now to assist us, we could truly use this individual as we're making the transition over into the new Justice Center. So our proposal would truly be, would request that we actually get funding for this position, as well as a secretary now, and then it would be our responsibility to find a physical location for this individual to sit in until we get over to the new facility. We do anticipate housing this individual up on the seventh floor in a visiting courtroom, so there wouldn't be any additional physical space requirements.
This all got started probably back in March, when Judge Zaleski was requesting a sixth judge.
That's correct. We actually had...
And that's when I actually started saying, "Well, is there any other way?" And that's when all the discussion started. I basically let everybody know how I feel. I think the diversion program, I support that whole heartily. I support, and I think you do need a court administrator. I think it's working well in the domestic relations, and I think you guys have two more actual judges, and I don't see how you've operated without it.
Yeah.
I think you do need that support. And if those, step one, step two happens, then I will support a judge in '07. So just to let you know my position. Thank you.
Would you run by that again, please? Step one and step two?
No, this is all...
No, would you repeat it? So I can, I don't need...
Play the tape back? Is that what judges do?
No, can't you, can't you just, geez, David, come on.
No, I'm just saying that when this all started, I'm not going to have arguments or discussions, because everyone has their own opinions. But a fact of fact, I believe we were looking at different ways to save the county. Mr. Rook's, his numbers, I seem to support. And I think that the county can't afford a new judge today, which in effect would happen in two years. I'm trying to figure out a way to buy time for the county, and I think '06 might be an appropriate time to have a sixth judge. But I feel that the diversion program, I supported it, because I think it does alleviate the dockets, but I don't know. They, I think the prosecutors and the judges, it sounds like they agree to it, and it sounds like it's just a funding issue. So if that's all it is, then I'll support the funding issue. And I also support the court administrator, because I don't see how they're operating without one. And if that's what it's going to take to keep everybody, I think, to alleviate what's going on over there, I think they need a, I think they need a court administrator now to help with the move. That in itself, I think is going to be difficult with five different judges trying to move at the same time with the dockets and everything. I just, I think now is the time to hire a court administrator for the judges. So, and in doing so, if, you know, one or two happens, then I'm in all support of '07.
Do we have figures on the court administrator position?
Thank you for evaluating that. The court administrator would be compensated the same rate as the staff attorneys are currently compensated. And...
And that is?
About $68,000 or so, something...
For one person?
For one person, correct.
Plus benefits.
We would also, I think also, maybe as a compromise, again, space is an issue, we would anticipate the court administrator would need the assistance of the secretary. I think, like I said, as a compromise, maybe it would be, commissioners would consider a court administrator now, and then when we make the transition and get over into the new facility, maybe the inclusion of a secretary for that individual as well.
Correct. But that would be in the '04 budget, when you presented your '04 budget?
Yeah.
Just a brief comment on the court administrator issue. In my discussions with people at the legislature and at the Supreme Court, they're very anxious to help us here in Lorraine County, and they will do that, particularly the Supreme Court will do that, at no cost to the county, to help us bridge this gap. But they're concerned about a court administrator. And they placed a couple of conditions upon their willingness to help. And one is that space requirement, to have an ongoing administrative, or ongoing visiting judge on staff here. Secretarial support, a bailiff, and the Judge Zaleski and I have discussed those issues, and those are resolvable. But they're concerned about a court administrator also. They want a court administrator in place, and if you recall, that was one of their recommendations when they came in and did their review of our court system here.
No, thank you for bringing that up. I forgot that was the closing, which is, in order, if we do this, we get a, I don't want to say a free judge, but the state is going to pick up the cost of having a sixth judge for Lorraine County till '06.
To help bridge the gap.
Yeah, to help bridge the gap.
For how long?
From now until '06, or whenever they get a visiting judge here. And, you know, we can talk about the cost in itself, but, you know, if we want to use low numbers, 300 a year, that's one, you know, that's 1.2 million in four years. Or we can use my numbers, which is, you know, you know, seven...
Well, we know we're all challenged for space here in the county, but there's a lot of team players here that are willing to suck it up and help out where we can. I know, I know there's going to be space made available if we can get somebody in here at no cost to the county.
But do you see that as the issue at hand right now, is what I tried to, I forgot about the free, or the services that the state's going to provide for the county, if this is the steps we take?
Correct.
That's how I see it. And that's what I, that's why I support it, because we're getting something from the state to help alleviate the dockets, so.
What do we have to do to get something, I don't mean to be facetious and ask about it in writing, but the state's financial condition is much better than ours. In fact, I think we're in a little better shape, because we manage our money better here in Lorraine County. But how do we effectuate this? I mean, we take action, we do all these things, and then they say, "Oh, well, we can't do it anymore." I mean, how do we do business like that, Judge?
No. It's my understanding, they're on board, and a resolution passed by the commissioner supporting a judge to be elected in this year, and along with the resolution letting us hiring a court administrator, we send that down to Columbus, somebody will sponsor legislation, the Supreme Court, if they see everybody's on board, the local papers, the Bar Association, county prosecutor, the commissioners, the judges, then we're good to go.
I would certainly like to see something in writing. Mr. Cortez, could you put that together for us?
Yes, I'd like to know the actual cost, too. I'd like to know in writing what the actual cost would be, and exactly what it is that we'll be voting on.
Okay, we're, so we're looking to do...
It'll be fine.
Put this on a resolution for a vote for next week?
Sure.
We're not going to be here next week, because we're going to be at the fair ringing a bell.
Twenty-eight.
Now, what are we talking about? The money for the diversion program or for this judge's program? I thought we had that on the agenda.
We could probably vote for the...
Diversion, diversion program is one, the sixth judge is another resolution in and of itself.
Totally off the agenda.
And we have, we've already have the resolution for Jeff. I wouldn't recommend using mine.
Well, that talks about funding for the whole year, and we've already gone through half a year, so it's not current the way it is.
I'd be pro-rated, Madam Commissioner, as far as we can pro-rate.
I understand that, but I would, I think there's some technicalities that need to be worked out between you and the presiding judge, and what is your title, Judge Zaleski?
Administrative judge.
So between the presiding judge, the administrative judge, and the prosecutor, I would like to see something come back to us that, you know, you're kind of all on the same page.
Yeah, but I think we're just talking about the money, Commissioner Blair.
Yeah, because I don't think we can, all we're worried about is funding for the diversion, funding for the court administrator...
Correct.
And whether or not we're going to support a judge, not this year, but in '06.
That's fine, but I'm...
To be elected in 2006.
I'm willing to support certain things when I see that these people who work on our behalf and for the county are in agreement with this. Now, you just got done talking about the Bar Association, the newspapers, et cetera, being in favor of or in support of this sixth judge.
Correct.
And that's fine. But I thought this diversion program, I thought you mentioned it as part of what might help us to better serve the public. So I don't think I'm out of line in asking, you know, you're all on the same page, is that too much to ask?
We have nothing to do with the diversion program, that's up to the judges and the prosecutor.
Well, I think that's a very big part of it, Commissioner Vacy. I mean, they can do it if they don't have the money, and we're the money guys.
Madam Commissioner, my approach to the commission was that, let's take, if we aren't going to have the funding in place, there's no point going any further with anything else. We can, there are, the program itself is pretty much there with a little bit of tweaking that has to occur between the constituencies. But we can't, we can't go much further unless we know there's going to be funding. I mean, we have, we can divert our resources onto the docket rather than doing this. We've put a substantial amount of time into it already, and all we're requesting is, if you're supportive of it, if you think it's a valuable program, perhaps we could get your consent to the funding. If we don't, if we can't have a meeting of the minds with the constituencies, the funding won't be necessary. But now we know we can go to the next step.
Well, but which, with all due respect, and I'm not negating all the time and effort that you put into it, but which came first, the chicken or the egg? I mean, excuse me, put yourself in my seat today, I heard you say, and I told you before that I was in favor of this program, it sounded good. I've also discussed it with Judge Zaleski, and I've heard some things from him. Now, I have the presiding judge come here this morning, and she has expressed some concern to us. I think out of respect to all of you, that you could give me something that I could live with, and it would be easy for me to just hand you over the money. I don't think that's asking too much, do you?
You know, the program is simple. The state of Ohio...
It doesn't sound like it's simple, Your Honor.
Well, it is. It's extremely simple. State of Ohio has a, well, listen to me.
I am sir.
All right. The state of Ohio says, if you want a diversion program, this is what you do. These cases are not eligible. Now, if you want to tweak it, you can't add cases. If they said you're not eligible for it, you're not eligible for it. You could be more restrictive in putting a dollar number on something. So it's simple. And if Mr. Manning doesn't want it tomorrow, or next year, that's his business. That's not our business. So all we have to do is just, here's the proposal, this is what it is, and it's done. It's that simple.
From what I heard from Judge McGuff, and from my own opinion, and it's only an opinion, but as far as I'm concerned, with the diversion program, which I know I have nothing to do with, this is going to be between you guys, but you know what it reminds me of? The song, "I sold my soul to the company store." When people start signing off their rights, their constitutional rights to due process, sorry, don't count me in. So don't count me in for the money.
Number one.
Because now I also see another program, and then coming down the road, another judge, plus an administrator, plus a secretary, and all the rest of this, with the county funding the way it is, and the budget the way it is today, I think we'd make a quick decision today and regret it a year from now. And that's just my opinion, and no offense. Now, what's your desire?
Can you add a question? I heard an opinion, I didn't see a question at the end of the opinion.
I didn't either.
No, I don't have a question, because that's the way I feel about it. I'm just voicing my opinion. And that's my right, constitutional.
Well, it's their right to plead guilty.
Yeah, but they're, but I know how attorneys operate, too, and how they can coerce someone, and it looks good that they're not going to jail. But the end result is, when you're on probation, you can be back in court in the blink of an eye, and I know that, too.
That's the way it's supposed to be.
And people are not going to be told all this by attorneys. They're going to be saying, "This is your easy way out, you're not going to go to jail," blah, 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 and that's just what I'm hearing here with this program. It's an easy way out, it's saving the money, this, it's saving the county, that. Where did I hear about the person that's pleading? You know, I didn't hear a lot about that person's pleading.
We're not talking money, we're talking justice here. We're talking a chance for this individual to enter a plea of guilty, to cooperate for a period of one year, and he's gone, and that thing disappears.
Yeah, and that's what they're going to tell the person. You cooperate for one year, but don't you be a bad girl or boy in the middle of that year, because if you spit on the sidewalk and we don't like it, you're going to be back in the system.
Well, yeah, I mean, that was, all they talked about was that this gives the victim, or not the victims, the people that committed a crime, another chance. They have an F4 and F5 on their record, there's a lot of opportunities and jobs that they will not have. This gives people who made a mistake an opportunity to correct that mistake. Now, did I hear that wrong? Is that what Judge McGuff agreed to?
That's exactly right.
That's what I thought I heard her say.
Right.
So we heard a lot about the people that make mistakes, but it sounds like to me the victims also have to be in agreement with this.
They have to be in agreement with it.
Right, so this is something, all it is, it's just, I don't even want to have a discussion. The discussion is, are the county commissioners going to fund a diversion program? That sounds like...
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
That's it.
And I'll support it, so I guess.
Okay, are you making a motion, or...
Well, no, the problem is that Commissioner Blair has, is that I think she wants to get more numbers. more numbers.
That she wanted to get some numbers together. Well, yeah, we'd be more than happy to sit down with Mr. Cortez, uh, and get, and get some numbers here before a resolution is passed.
I just thought, I heard some differences of opinion here today, and I would like to have the concurrence that I think each of the party is due, and I'm willing to support the diversion with adequate numbers. I'm willing to support the sixth judge in the year that you mentioned. I'm willing to support the, um, administrator to assist with this process. Uh, I think they're all viable things. I appreciate the fact that you've waited since March for an audience, and, but, but the bottom line is money. I know, you don't, you only, you only, you only here because you need us, because we've got the pocketbook, and I understand that. I wasn't born yesterday. But the bottom line is how we render service to the citizens of Lorraine County.
No question.
And there's always ways where we can improve individually, regardless of who we are. So I'd just like it all presented in a written form to us, and then if we have a majority of the board to agree with it, we can move forward. If we don't, then we have to go back and see how we're going to address the situation, because it doesn't appear to me that it's going to get better.
But what are you talking about? Do you want to, are you guys, or?
I, I, didn't you hear what I said? I thought I said it pretty good, David. You got upset when I asked you to repay that.
Goes around, comes around. Here we go.
Weren't you listening?
So are you saying you want, you just want to get written a documentation of the court administrator and the judge? So are we okay to pass?
I, I mentioned diversion first. Let's go back to what I talked about first.
Are we willing to pass diversion today?
No, absolutely not. I want those parties who, who came here.
That's fine, that's all I wanted to know. So we'll wait till next week?
No, we'll wait for two weeks, because we're not meeting next week.
Two weeks, when we discuss this, and then again.
And in the meantime, I believe that Mr. Cortez will get some numbers from them and put together in a resolution, one, two, three, four, five, okay? It'll be given to us, then we can decide whether we want to accept it.
Okay, that sounds good.
Thank you.
There we go. Thanks for coming in, too.
Appreciate your time.
Why don't you just read the next one, two, three, four, or five resolutions in a row, and we'll all vote on them? How's that? Is that appropriate, commissioners?
Sounds good.
Okay.
They're going to be separate, they have to be separate resolutions, so.
Okay, they're gonna read one at a time, we'll vote.
So number twenty-two, do you want me to read that over again?
No, I'll move for approval.
Is there any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Number twenty-three, declaring it necessary to construct sanitary sewers and appetances in order to eliminate the Columbia West River wastewater treatment plan in Lorraine County General Sewer District 110. Assessments for the facilities will be levied against all benefited property fronting upon Riverview Drive and Columbia West River Road, and being lots number two through twenty of the West River subdivision. All facilities are reconstrued within roadway right-of-way and county-owned property. This hearing will take place on Thursday, September eighteen, two thousand and three, at five thirty P.M., in room two fourteen and two fifteen in the Spitzer Conference Center of Lorraine County Community College, one zero zero five Abbey Road North, Alaria, Ohio. Notice will be published in a general circulation newspaper on August twentieth and twenty-seventh, two thousand and three, and letters will be sent to various property owners.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Twenty-four, declaring it necessary to construct sanitary sewers and appetances in Lorraine County General Sewer District along Oberlin Road and Amherst Township one oh nine. Assessments for the facilities will be levied against all benefited developed properties fronting upon Oberlin Road from K-Drive From K-Drive to Middle Ridge Road, on Middle Ridge Road between Oberlin Road to the north and excluding all fronting developed properties which are already connected to said interceptor sewer. All facilities are to be constructed within road right-of-way. This hearing will take place on Monday, September fifteen, two thousand and three, at five thirty P.M., in the grand room of the Spitzer Conference Center of Lorraine County Community College, one zero zero five Abbey Road North, Alaria. Notice will be published in a general circulation newspaper on August twentieth and twenty-seventh, and letters will be sent to various property owners.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Declaring it necessary to construct sanitary sewers and appetances in Lorraine County General Sewer District along East River Road and Chestnut Ridge Road in Carlisle Township number one oh eight. Assessments for the facilities will be levied against all benefited properties fronting upon East River Road from the intersection of Fuller Road South, southeasterly approximately two thousand four hundred and twenty-one feet, as measured along the centerline of East River Road, and all properties fronting upon Chestnut Ridge Road from the intersection of East River Road to the intersection of Rosemary Street, excluding a one point forty acre parcel of land with parcel number one zero 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 four one three two zero zero six, and a point six four acre parcel of land within parcel number one zero 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 four one three two zero one five. All facilities are reconstrued within a road right-of-way. This hearing will take place on Monday, September fifteen, two thousand and three, at seven thirty P.M., in room two fourteen and two fifteen of the Spitzer Conference Center of Lorraine County Community College, one zero zero five Abbey Road North, Alaria. Notice will be published in a general circulation newspaper on August twentieth and twenty-seventh, two thousand and three, and letters will be sent to various property owners.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Declaring it necessary to construct improvements to upgrade the Plum Creek wastewater treatment plant in Lorraine County General Sewer District one oh seven. Assessments for the facilities will be levied against all benefited property served by said wastewater treatment plant, consisting of lots numbers one through forty-two and seventy-six through eighty-one, fronting Plum Creek Drive and acreage parcels with parcel numbers one two zero 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 six six one zero four zero zero two, and last numbers oh three, fronting the south side of Larry Twinsburg Road, State Route eighty-two, being approximately two hundred ninety-two feet and three hundred ninety-two feet easterly of the centerline of Plum Creek Drive. This hearing will take place on Tuesday, September sixteen, two thousand and three, at seven thirty P.M., in room two fourteen and two fifteen of the Spitzer Conference Center of Lorraine County Community College, one zero zero five Abbey Road North, Alaria, Ohio. Notice will be published in a general circulation newspaper on August twentieth and twenty-seventh, and letters will be sent to various property owners.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Board correspondents?
I will be reading the wave.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Public comment?
Is there anyone here that would like to address the board?
Come on.
Would you please come up to the podium? State your name and please spell your last name.
Kelly Canfield, C-A-N-F-I-E-L-D. Hello, my name is Kelly Canfield. I attend Firelands High School only being a freshman this coming school year. I have been in four age for nine years, six as a fourager, and three as a cloverbud. For the past year, I have been a member of the Lorraine County Junior Leaders. Through my years of four age, I have held numerous offices. Currently, I'm the president, president of the Penfield Co-op Farmers. I have taken many projects in six years, but for five of those years, I have taken rabbits. As you are aware, that on Thursday, August twenty-first, at one o'clock P.M., the Junior Fair Board will be holding their annual livestock auction. This year, for the first time, one of my four age projects will be a pen of three meat rabbits. These rabbits must be sold at the Junior Fair Auction. For this is the reason I am here today, to challenge all elected officials and any candidate seeking public office to bid on my rabbits. I will in turn donate twenty-five percent of the amount I receive for my rabbits to the four age endowment fund in the name of the person purchasing my rabbit. I ask you to come to the auction and support all fouragers. Thank you for your time, and I hope to see you at the two thousand and three Lorraine County Fair.
Thank you for coming here, Kelly. Good job. I like your challenge.
Is there anyone else? Bob? No?
No, we're near any.
Elizabeth Shirley? Dave?
Yeah, if there are any council candidates in Oberlin, I'll tell them about the rabbits.
Oh, good, thank you.
I don't, I'm a little hesitant. Shirley R. Johnson, Oberlin. Uh, I was concerned when the diversion program was being discussed, at the difference between the two diversion programs, and I, I just want to raise this question, it may seem simple-minded to the legal authorities here, but as I understood it, under the Manning diversion program, a person would be required to plead guilty. Uh, under the judge's diversion program, they have, they are, they have a trial and they're sentenced first. And I'm always concerned when we talk about saving money on court-appointed attorneys or any other attorneys, I think it's very important that any offender has, has really, does really have good legal service and knows what he or she is doing at the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? You can take the mic down.
You can't go around it.
I think they can hear me. Um, I have Bob passing out to you what it is I'm going to talk about, but the first thing, and it's not on those papers, is accessibility in this room. Uh, before I could get up to speak, I had to have my husband remove a chair in the back of the room, and then remove the podium so that there's room for me. According to the Americans with Disabilities Act, which you list as complying with on the front of your agendas, there is supposed to be a minimum of thirty-six inches in any place where people are going to be walking, and it's preferred to be forty-two inches, and if the person is, is supposed to be able to turn around in an area like by the podium, it's supposed to be a five-foot square open area. I backed into the wastebasket the last time I was here, because there is not enough room to be able to turn around. So if you can, please.
Can you address that right now? Can you address that right now?
Sure.
Sure. Commissioner, you had this thing moved in the middle. And only, this is when it's all happened, when we moved the camera over here. Camera used to be over here, and it gave, you, everybody in the room. I would prefer to see the camera right back there to give the access back, but that's just my opinion.
Well, according to the law, and all the lawyers, I believe, left, except Mr. Manning, according to the law.
If we moved the camera back over here, I think that would fix it.
Either that, or move those chairs over, so she can get around that way.
I gotta do this. Move the camera back.
Move out a whole row of chairs, there would be room. The back, uh, where the table of coffee is could be moved back further so that there was room to get through. There, there's a lot of things that could be done, but I just had to bring it up because of him having to move things. The reason I came is to talk to you about transportation. Uh, the last time I was at the commissioner's public meeting, I spoke about the Lorraine County multimodal transportation plan, and I told you that it took over two hundred peoples from the community and more than eighteen months to gather the information that was in that plan. The plan was released a year ago in May, and is a five-year plan. Uh, I requested that if you have it on a shelf someplace, that you pull it down, dust it off, and read the section having to do with public transit, um, meaning the bus system. The first section that I addressed was the section called Veteran Form the Public of the Benefits of Public Transit. Uh, I also included some of the May two thousand and three ridership statistics from the June Lorraine County Transit Meeting. Today, I'm going to give you the benefit of some research that I've done on the internet, and provide some newly released national data concerning transportation. Hopefully, this data will inform you as policymakers that funding transit so that Lorraine County can keep their system operating, as it certainly does today, will help to address injustices, strengthen civil rights for most of minority groups, and assist in maintaining social equity. I'm attaching the fact sheet, Transportation and Social Equity, to my testimony. This piece of information is from the Center of Community Change and the Civil Rights Project out of Harvard University. Their transportation charter is at the top of the attachment. The last sentence of that charter reads, "The transportation system should allow every American to participate fully in society, whether or not they own a car, and regardless of age, ability, ethnicity, or income." Some of the results of this study, and you can read the summary of the study, but I pulled out some things I thought were really pertinent. Early impacts of interstate construction succeeded in demolishing three hundred and thirty-five thousand homes, which just happened to be in the heart of the African-American communities in those cities. Transportation decisions systematically undermined the basic rights of one-third of all Americans who are either too old, too young, or too disabled to be able to drive. Seventy-five percent of ozone pollution is generated by tailpipe emissions.[1662.16]